Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I will call to order the January 13th meeting of 2025, Meeting of the Village of Wesley Chapel Council. If you will rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then Pastor Michael Crowder from Silo Presbyterian is going to do our invocation for us tonight.
Would you pray. Dear God, we invite you into this place. May your wisdom guide our decisions. May your mercy guide our conversations. And may your will and our desire to serve and to be part of this community guide our actions and hearts tonight. We love you, Lord. We want to be glorified tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right. Thank you, Pastor Michael. That leads us to public comments. We have two people signed up tonight. If you will approach the podium and state your name and address for the record. Tom McCobb.
My name is Tom McCobb, M.C., C.O.V.B.
And your address?
2005 Poplar Ridge Drive, St. Louis, Ellison Downs, New Orleans Airport Road. And we've been a happy residence in Placid County for four and a half years. We're refugees from Pennsylvania. I'm here to speak to you tonight on behalf of the Union County Amateur Radio Society, of which I am a member and the current president. And I want to talk specifically about the proposed use of Dogwood Park for an activity that we have coming up at the end of this month, if they're here in time. The Union County Amateur Radio Society is a club that's existed here in Union County for, I think, over 40 years now. And we actually meet across the street once a month at the Silo Presbyterian Church. So this feels like a good place to come to discuss this activity. Twice a year, the National Organization for Amateur Radio Operators, so Pan Radio Operators, sponsors or sets up an activity called Field Pick. And it's an opportunity for clubs like ours, or even big ones, but usually clubs, to go out to any given location where there's no access to regular power or shelter and set up radio transmitters on a temporary basis and then attempt to communicate with many other Pan Radio Clubs that are participating in the exercise, all across the country, sometimes across the world. The real purpose of this is to give us some hands-on training in setting up under adverse conditions for emergency communications. We do it twice a year. The biggest of these two activities is in the summer. In the years past, actually, we have set up, you may have seen this, at the Silo Presbyterian Church. And we've explored other than since then. There's also a winter field, just to see how many of us can just see not only adverse conditions but adverse weather, too. Last year in court, rain cats and dogs, it's very cold. It's an opportunity for us to get out and make sure that we can get everything operating under circumstances where it really makes a difference. Dogwood Park for us would be an absolutely wonderful place to hold this activity this year. It's on January 25th, which is a Saturday, and it goes through January 26th, a Sunday. And we've spoken with John, the groundskeeper, and with Mr. Koma. And at this point, honestly, I'm not sure what we have to do or would like us to do in order to qualify to use this park. So hopefully we can get some guidance on that tonight, or willing to comply with any formalities that we need to undertake.
What are the hours of the event? Because the park is not open at night.
Well, we wouldn't be staying overnight.
At dusk, the doors close.
Then you'd be out there at dusk. And the summer activity, you usually will spend the night, and there will be people operating 24 hours straight. That's not going to happen all the way through. So I don't think that's a problem for us.
Okay.
You could be lucky also, you know, other people. Well, there might be about a dozen at any given time.
So let's add this under the community, the Dogwood Park, as Item C, and then we can discuss it there. Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
Can you stick around for a bit to get to that session?
All right. Thank you, Mr. McCobb. And then the next on the list is Pastor Michael Crowder. If you will state your name and address.
My name is Michael Crowder. I work across the street at 6301 Weddington Matthews Road. My home address is 7119 Collins Place, where you recorded. And I live just on the other side of the Arbour. So, on behalf of Silo Presbyterian Church, again, we're going to be celebrating our 130th year here across the street. What used to be farm fields in a very rural part of Union County has grown up around us. And I just wanted to let, on behalf of Silo, to let you all know as council, that we are here to help and do life with you together. If there's ever a need in the community or someone that cannot take place on Dogwood Park, we work for the Amateur Radio Club for years, they're now our site. We would love to open up our campus, look up opportunities in any line of communications that we can have to help build this community and continue its growth going forward in its health, in its scope, if there's a particular need of emergency. I and my staff are here to serve, the elders are here to partner, and we have great networks with Union County, especially our area in Wesley Chapel, Weddington, and Waxaw, other local churches who would love to be available for any needs for Wesley Chapel in particular. So if there's ever a need, just want to let you know, on behalf of Silo, we would love to partner with you in any of the events or opportunities we have going forward.
Besides the amateur radio, don't you also work with Boy Scouts and a bunch of other things?
So we have an event on our campus six days a week. And sometimes that's hosting groups like the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts. We have a homeschool group that meets on Mondays. We have a music club that meets on Tuesdays. We have church events that happen on Wednesdays and Sundays. We have a Polish community, so there's actually a large Polish community on the other side of Wesley Chapel. They're now coming and doing cultural education and opportunities. And so we're trying to build as best we can, that's for the community and it's available for the community. So if there's any way we can partner with that going forward, we'd love to have that opportunity.
Thank you, Pastor Michael. All right. Yeah, that's Karen Partee. Would you like to speak in public comment, ma'am? Anybody else? Going once. So that leads us to additions, deletions, and adoption of agenda. So we're adding Item C, the Union County Amateur Radio Society, to number seven. Are there any other additions, deletions, or changes to tonight's agenda?
Motion to accept the agenda as amended.
All in favor? Now we have the consent agenda, which includes some minutes and two resolutions that have a motion for the consent agenda.
Motion to accept the consent agenda.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
Did you want to read the resolution?
No.
Okay.
There, I mean, I can give a quick summary. The ZIP Code Resolution is other municipalities in the state are asking for their own ZIP Code for their city. So we are trying to get ourselves and Weddington and I think Marvin was going to try to get added to that resolution. I don't have a lot of hope for it, but we can try. And the other resolution is to get our NC-84 project added to MTP. So those are both in there. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? That brings us to the Finance Officer Report.
So any consent agenda council, did anyone get a chance to look at the financial chart I put in there?
In the packet?
Yeah, behind you on the screen. Okay. So every year when we create an ordinance, we create it at a roll-up level, at a very high level. This, I've established our accounting and finance system to roll up to our ordinance so that I can monitor where we are and make sure that we don't go over what's expected of us, what we're accountable to do. So each year when we have an audit, our audits are actually sent to Local Government Commission. The Local Government Commission consists of nine people. There is the State Treasurer, the North Carolina State Auditor, North Carolina Secretary of State, North Carolina Secretary of Revenue, and then there's five other people, three are appointed directly by the Governor, two are by recommendation by someone in the House. So there are nine people who are very knowledgeable, some have to have municipal government experience such. So anyway, I bring that up because when we look at our numbers, you wonder each month how I keep up with, you know, making sure we stay within the requirements of North Carolina. If you look at this chart up there, you'll see that the tax receipts were at 60%, 66% of budget. So we still have a little bit to go on the season. The tax is given this January. I hope they'll hurry up and get us a little bit more. The shared receipts is really low. That's not concerning because we have our utility receipts come in, we've got our first receipt before in December for July, August, and September. So those are like three months lag. So what will happen at the very end of the year is I'll have to adjourn entries to bring in, bring the money in sooner, and then reverse it at the end of the year. If you look down at our appropriations, this year, we have appropriated $1.4 million of our fund balance. So if you're thinking about that $2 million in the bank, oh my goodness, we need to not have that much. This year, we've appropriated $1.4 million. That money is coming from, some of its money we haven't received, but we will receive. Some of it is money that is ours and some is from other banks. So we have 602 expected from FEMA, 602,000. We got 250,000 from the state for the park. We got 100,000 that council set aside. We also have 400 and approximately $40,000 set aside, which consists of the $92,000 fund balance that you used for the budget shortfall when you made decisions this last budget season, 300,000 for the roundabout that we actually already paid, and 48,000 for the Mayflower study that we are undergoing right now. So if you look at these numbers, it looks like our total impact is at 15%, but we know that is in part due because of the large number of appropriations and the lag in our shared utilities. The expenses, if you look down, everything is below 50%. Why 50%? 50% year-over-year. So, but when you see the Public Safety Department, it's 74%. That's because we pay three-quarters of our four-quarter Union County Sheriff's Office. And I told you that would be up cad, but we're a little low on the national night out, so that will see something. You'll see that come up in a budget request, like a budget-to-budget amendment, just to make sure those come together. I also wanted to show you, just while we're here, I told you in November that I would like to move a million and a half over to our North Carolina Capital Management Trust. I explained a little about that to you. This little chart, if you can look up behind you up here, on the right side is Truist, and we had 1.2 million at 2.99%. And over on the other side, we had the 250,000 we got from the state at .003%, which is .0000370, which was the amount of interest. So year-to-date, we received, when I had done this, $9 in like three months, okay? So it's very important where we put our money and how we use it. So I've allocated that $10 of our activities next year, and I'm just kidding. You are listening, I'm like, oh. So basically, that 1.2 million and the 250 that you see over here is just compared over here. So on monthly, just on that 1.5, we're looking at about 5.7 on that 4.59% that we get from the North Carolina, that's the November 30-day average. Now, that yield is calculated daily, so I have to actually do a spreadsheet to make the number come out right when we actually allocate certain monies. So the annual total by just moving it is a comparison of 68,850 to 37,384. That's what we would be looking at just by moving that 1.5 million. So in the seven months upcoming compound, on the bottom, it's 40,626, which is about an 84% increase in interest. So we're going to make some good interest this month. I normally get about 3,100. I got over $7,000 in interest by moving that money over. And as a reminder, the North Carolina Capital Management Trust, we are in the government fund, and that government fund is, it follows closely the funds rate and the Fed's fund rate. It's also backed by the government because it's mostly invested in treasury bills. So that is how that roll-up works. This is what the LGC holds the council accountable for. Now, when you look at the report, the December report, like see that number 101 here, 02, 03, 04, 05? When I start looking a little bit deeper, okay. So before I go any further, here's 2.1 in cash that we have right here. We have 1.8 at the North Carolina Capital Management Trust and 315 in our checking So when you come down to, like this income, see that 01 right there, 01? There's your 66.11, there's your breakdown on how we're rolling up. So if the actuals right here don't line up, or if one's too high, and I'm not going to be using, like look at advertising right here, right on the data, I see 352%. Oops. Right? So the 35822, I'm looking to add money to the budget. I think I've added, I don't know, I have 220 or 300, something like that, just so that our budget number here stays below 100%. We can stay below 100, we should be at 50 with the spending. But the advertising shot up because we're trying to do the breach in some advertising that wasn't exactly expected and advertising was expensive. But no worries because our big numbers are rolling up where they should be. Let me see if there's anything else. David, you always like to, did you have any questions on what you read this week?
No, not really.
Kathy, you were talking about the dam breach and the reimbursement for that. Do they reimburse us for the advertising that's required as well under the state?
And we should put that in there. Yeah, we can put that in there. All right. So to that, and then let me see what I got here.
And we'll talk about that in Item 7B.
I'll probably go because we're talking about answers.
Okay. So the other thing I wanted to show you. Does everyone have a good set of toothpicks to hold your eyeballs over for this one? All right. So we got the results back from our audit, and it's claimed everything's good. So this is the second year I've had a clean audit, which is good, government financing. So this right here is the June 30, 2024 audit. If you look up, I'm just going to kind of give you a highlight on this to see. When you do an audit, you have several requirements in your financial audit that are different from your basic financials. Your basic financials have to go into your audit, but everything is statutory. So the very first thing we have is the Independent Auditor's Record. And when she comes to talk to you, she's pretty much going to tell you what her responsibilities are, what she found. She can't find downright fraud. She's looking to make sure everything is reasonable and packed and is explained well. She's not trying to be the end-all guy. She's just making sure our records are in good standing. So the Management's Discussion Analysis is something I put together, and then Amanda and I go over it, and we tweak it however she feels that we need to tweak it. And then we get to our Basic Financial Statements. Now, our government-wide financial statements and our fund financial statements are two different things. Our government-wide are on an accrual basis using an economic resource management focus, and our funds are modified accrual, which has a current finance resource measurement focus. And each one of those definitions is very large and encompassing in a lot of different ways. So I won't get into that. All right. And then we have to have our required supplemental. So this graph, there's a graph right here. I'm not going to put this thing without my H and Ms, but here. This up here is your required components of your annual financial report on the board behind you. It has your Annual Discussion Analysis and your Basic Financial Statements. Your Basic Financial Statements are comprised of three parts. Your government-wide, which we said was the economic resource on accrual basis, and your fund financial statements are on a modified accrual with a current financial resource measurement focus. And then we have the statements. So when I look through these, here's our financial highlights. The assets and deferred outflows of resources for the Village of Wesley Chapel exceeded liabilities and deferred inflows, which is a legal statistic of statutory formula, for the fiscal year by 4.4 million. And what that looks like, here's your net statement, your Statement of Net Position. And what it's saying is that your assets plus your deferred outflow of resources, which is a timing issue, minus your liabilities, which are your current liabilities, and then your deferred inflows, which is another timing of your funds, that all total up a net difference of 4.4 million. Now, page 18, if we look back at, I'm going to go back to eight to show you this. All right. So the government's total net position increased by 89,900. That's not more or less money, that's our net position. Okay. So that net position comes from page 18 on the financial report. And this is a Statement of Activities. This shows our expenses, and it shows offsets for your planning and zoning. So it has our total expenses at 817, revenues at 907, the difference is 89,923 in our net position. And that is our change in net position, that is not our net change in fund balance. All right. So the next thing that I wanted to show you was, let's see, the fund financial statements come in two parts. There's the government financial, or the government fund statements, not to be confused with your government-wide financial statements, it's something entirely different, your governmental fund statements, and your budgetary comparison statement. So Exhibit 3, this right here, and there's another formula, financial calculation that determines whether you have a major fund or you don't have a major fund. We have two major funds here, so, but where is it? It's not showing up. That's because in government accounting, it has to be a deferred liability until you can actually earn it, and once you earn it, then you convert it to revenue, and then you can report it. So basically, we're just showing you here that you've got two different funds, which was part of the increase in the accounting cost this year. Now, the balance sheet for government funds, this all right here is just a reconciliation, just making sure our numbers balance. Exhibit 4 is a Statement of Revenue Expenditures and the Changes in Fund Balance. So this guy right here shows about 195,060 right here. That's the money we have from ARBA that came into our funds. And again, you know, it shows your two funds, and it shows your fund balance and the. All right. So in this one, we see right here that our net change in fund balance is 196,873. So not bad. Now, I wanted to tell you, too, that, you know, your government-wide statements and your fund financial statements are accounted for in two completely different ways, in two different sets of rules. And this is why people have so much trouble with government accounting. And your government funds, you know, you have, under your government category, you have government, fiduciary, and proprietary, and each one of those has a number of funds, rules and regulations that go with those as well. So this again is another reconciliation. And then here, you can see on revenue, because if you guys just want, this is a real simple little picture. Here we had, we got $21,000 more than we thought, and we didn't spend $69,000, so, I mean, 47,000. So we kind of came out on our expenses and revenue about 69,000. But all that said, then our change in net, our net change in fund balance, there's our 196,873 again. Now, throughout these, these, this financial, this report is very encompassing. It talks about what we do, what we've done. It talks about our deposits and our investments. It gives you, this right here is our governmental activities. We have a developer escrow at 45,000, we have a 5,000, and then we also have that unsigned proceeds of 250. So this report is very encompassing. Once you have a chance to review it, if you have any questions, let me know. And I'll do my very best to try to put it away that's huge and friendly. So that's that. Any questions?
Kathy, the only question I have is, none of the funds are tied up in anything that we're locked into. We have access to the money all the time.
Well, good thing you asked. We don't. We have unspendable funds, which are assets. We have restricted funds, which are grants and state monies that come in that can be used for a specific purpose, which council does not have any control over those funds. Your only control is permitted, which you do by ordinance you assign, which you do by motion, and your, 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 um, unsigned amounts.
But we can get the money out of where we moved it to, from Truist into the...
Is that what you're asking about? The, oh, you're asking about our investment?
That was my question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because I wanted to make sure if DOT came and asked for money, we could get to it quickly.
That's exactly why I brought them up.
We can.
Absolutely. I'm sorry, wrong question, wrong answer. No, our money is very liquid. It can come in within a day. We discussed that, I think, at the last meeting, that it's very fluid, it's very safe, and it has a very high yield, which is, those things don't usually go together. So, okay, so that's that. I don't have any questions on those. Let me see what I have next.
The bonds release.
All right. The Cadizon Bonds. At the last meeting, we talked about how the Cadizon Bonds are, have been released by the county. So the county had maintenance bonds, which they released because they've accepted the system. And here's their letter of final acceptance for the development. Now, I am not a bond expert, but I do know bonds are, and I apologize if I didn't tell you at the last meeting, but bonds are just simply money in case you don't do the job in the right way, and then you leave. So they have money to get to finish the job. So these are water and sewer bonds. The county has signed off on them. This letter of final acceptance, I'll only use the letter, and my friends over here to my right can jump in if they need to. We've got the system acceptance and initiation of service, which outlines, Councilmember Bailey, for your question, a condition of acceptance. It outlines meter set service authorization, partial acceptance, transfer title, anything that you might want to know on, I guess, what the terms are for those. Typically, my role is just simply when the engineer says to release them, that he's done the work, and I release them. But I'm always happy to gather more information. Any questions?
I think the only time we had a problem with that in the past is we didn't try to buy Bonnie for the stormwater engineer, and that came back and hit us in the backside.
That would be a question for your engineer, not for your clerk?
But we got a letter from Danny for these, so all we need to...
We got a letter from the county, and Danny has signed off, and I did work with him diligently to make sure that, you know, that we were clear to sign off, and he said that we are. He also sent me a lot of information in case any of you want to go further on, looking to what the bonds require. The problem with going into trying to figure out what the bonds, what the requirement, the regulatory requirement is, is that you have these requirements, but if this is the case, then you have these requirements. And if you have this case, you have this requirement. And that's why they're licensed engineers, because even if I were to look it up, it's still very, very difficult. So Danny has here, if any of you would like it, I can send you the email. He's got connections to the village ordinance, the school of government, and several different resources if you'd like to look it up and maybe try to understand more now what the requirements are for releasing bonds. I can forward that to you. Would anybody like that?
All right. Raise your hand as well.
You should have just sent it to all of us.
Yes.
Yeah. So if, does anybody have any questions for Kathy about the bonds? So I will take a motion, please.
Can everybody?
Please.
Motion for bonds? To be released?
A motion to release the Cadizon Sanitary Sewer Bond and Water Main Bond?
So motion.
Is there a second?
Second, but we're only those two.
Just those two?
Yep.
So they're still holding 743,000.
Okay. And then the next thing that I have...
Want to wait? All in favor?
Well, the only part of the discussion is that all the engineers have, we checked all the boxes.
Check the boxes.
If that's the case, I'm ready to go.
Okay, so all in favor? Unanimous?
All right, and then the last thing I have is, all right, so on the major dam repair, we had, we had agreed, or council had authorized me in November to read, to put the dam project out for bid January 8. But Amy Black, who is our engineer, received some information back from FEMA, and so what they, what they have to do is, they need all, you look at this, the village has to meet the criteria for the high hazard potential dam, and submissions from all the applications have to be received before the decision for the project can be made. The project has to meet the HHPD requirement and this particular requirement. Now, what they've done is FEMA's EHP, which is the environmental historic preservation, their experts will review each application for qualification for the HHPD. During this review, they may identify possible cultural and biological concerns that may result in more site-specific environmental assessments, which could result in additional survey. To my knowledge, they haven't even gotten to that point to see if we have to have any of those assessments. Their process will be to, I have it all up here on the screen for you, within your agenda packet, to triage, to make sure they have all the documents, to review them, which is review the project, determine if there are additional consultants needed, to have an H step process review. They want to identify the any conditions or best practices for the project, and then they will submit a rec memo, which just means that all of the reviews have been completed and that the review process is complete. From there, they'll do a closeout, which just is ensuring things, conditions were in compliance, and that any other documents were, are received.
So basically, Amy Black is saying, don't rebid it until we know we're getting money.
She wants to make sure that the money, that we receive the money, because this process is, is something different and new, and it's just kicking it out a lot longer.
So the dam rebid process will just be TBD upon funding notification. Okay?
And I think you'll be going into code enforcement?
Sure. Well, any financial questions for Kathy before we move on to code enforcement?
Any kind of realistic timeline, and I'm not going to hold you to it, because I know they tangled the carrot for months. When will we actually get a, a firm commitment?
We don't know.
It just, it astonishes me that they can tell us they're going to give us money, but never tell us when.
With the asking.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, we do have...
The EHP review is going to be at least six months.
If you have to have a...
And nothing happens before that EHP review's done.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
Okay, and then...
One other question, and that's, basically, all or nothing with that? Would they, have they told us what percentage?
They haven't told us anything. They're still gathering the applications.
We might get none.
They're not, they're not going to look at anybody's application until they're all in, and we just got this information on January 11. So they're still waiting for all of the applications to come in. Once they get those applications, they're going to start that review process. And that review process, they didn't tell us, I went over the email, I summarized key points, they just said that they'll review each application for qualification for the HHPD, and that they may identify possible cultural or biological concerns that may result in additional site-specific environmental assessments.
And John, you said that takes six months?
At least.
At least six months.
If, if we have to have one, I don't know what we have. I don't know, I don't know if we're going to get held up on everybody else's site-specific environmental assessments, that's not something they told us, so...
John, would you share with council some of the questions they specifically asked while they were outside?
That's different, so, at, at the grant for the breach meeting we had here, there was an EHP person from FEMA here. I was hoping it was the one who was going to do this, completely different.
It's not, okay.
She, the lady who was there only does EHP reviews related to disaster grants. She does not do EHP reviews related to HHPD grants. She did not know they were doing our, our, she didn't know how long it would take, she couldn't answer any questions about the big grant, only about the little grant.
Right. So, but again, on this one, unless, unless there's something I don't know, it said that they're going to, you know, review each application, and they may, they may identify, may identify, which could result, which will result in, or may result, so they say could and it may. So I'm not, it's not easy.
Yeah.
I mean, if this hypothetical site-specific environmental assessment does need to be done, it will probably take six months. But we have not been told that we have to have that, as of this date, to my knowledge.
Discussions with Amy were that, since it was formerly a residential property, unlikely there's going to be any issues with historic preservation stuff, because it was residential. And we did have an environmental endangered species survey done when we built the park to get the permits to build the park, so it was, we've had one before, and that did not identify any endangered species or anything like that, so...
But John, share with council some of the stuff you told me, as far as, the questions they were asking as far as where did the rock come from?
Well, let's wait till we get to that.
When we get to the FEMA grant, we're going to...
Different definition.
So, to, to be clear, we have the big rock that's going on, and then we had to do the breach, which is the little piece in between. So John, John's going to give the update, those are the emails you've been receiving from me, but that, that meeting, we've had two meetings on. That's just trying to get money back for that little bit we spent for Palain, that has nothing to do with this, the dam repair. The only thing, the only reason they're going to interact is that the scope is going to change on the big project, because some of the dams already been breached. So, and like I said, John's going to update on that, you should have seen it in your emails, so you should know a good bit to ask questions if you need to. All right, so can we move?
Any financial questions for Kathy before we move to code enforcement? All right.
Okay. So the code enforcement update, January's a really busy time for me trying to close out the calendar year and do all the reporting that we have to do with that, especially coming out of everybody being slow at Christmas, it's, it's like going full speed from, from a chug. We've had, we have two standing complaints, 903 and 918 are at the place. I honestly, I, I looked at them, but I have to go back down and take another look and, and send some letters out, I haven't, I've done that yet. Over the last few months, we have resolved 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11 properties. We've got, which includes 13 and 14, but 410 cottonwood and 611 red cedar. The 611 still has some cleanup to do, and I think they'll be fine. 410, I, I'm going to have to shop that man, and I will definitely get his attention. And then the non-compliance unresolved is by the 1-4. I've got to go back out and look at him, he had some construction in the house, it looks like it's being renovated, and if you walked up day one, it's fine, you've got your tractors and all that. Well, he's been like that for a very long time, so I've been after him to clean it up, and now that I am your code enforcement officer, I am definitely going to hit that as well. And I'll have each, each month, I will keep listing out the resolved complaints, only the current resolved complaints. Any questions? I do, I do have one for council. I think it's reasonable that if I get a complaint on Apple Street, and I go down Apple Street and turn down Pear Street and come back on Orange Street, that if I see similar properties, that I go ahead and send letters. I'm one person, I cannot review this entire community, but their questions came about HOAs, we don't really have problems with HOAs, the HOAs are usually pretty straight. Ours are on these little sideline roads, so if I see them, is council okay with me not waiting for a complaint, because I'm going to get chain complaints when I send a letter?
Well, the issue there is, we've always adopted a policy, if we don't go out looking for, we just report, we just respond to complaints that come in, so that's what council's got to weigh against, you know, are we going to go out and start looking for stuff? Or just responding to complaints?
Because if David gets a complaint, he is going to start complaining about all his neighbors.
Well, and they do that to me already, and I can say, well, he, we sent him a letter too, you know, so it's fair, we sent him a letter too. But I'm, I'm here for the council, whatever you like me to do.
I agree with Mike, I don't think we need to instigate actions like that. We should do as we always have and respond to, to complaints.
Great. Because otherwise, when they call them, say, why did you write this letter when no one complained?
Yeah.
Well, we've wrote the letter, it has been observed, because I am your code enforcement officer.
Right, but we act on complaints from residents, so...
You can tell a complaining resident that they can send a letter in, and then that gives you more of a formal avenue to approach it, but to, to just go out and start looking for stuff is, I think is not the, not the tactic we want to take.
Is council in consensus with that?
Yes.
Yes?
Hello?
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. That leads us to Dogwood Park. Mr. Lepke, have you approached the...
Sure.
...guyas?
So...
You're more than a groundskeeper to me.
Last week, we had a surprise visit by North Carolina DEQ dam safety people, the unannounced compliance visit, they did an inspection of the dam. They came with all this fancy new software that doesn't work on a breached dam. So they got all these computers, sort of like, ooh, we can't take any of the measurements needed for this, so they just breached and walked away. They were happy with the maintenance of the dam, will be getting a letter that they did the inspection and everything like that. Playground border, which you guys approved a couple months ago, is now installed, it looks beautiful.
It does look good.
Have you had a heavy rain since then?
We've not had a heavy, we've had a light rain since then, not a heavy rain, but it looks really nice, very happy with the way it came off. So that's done. Just a quick note on the town hall, the AV guy who came and met with Joe and I left the company after our meeting, and apparently did not tell his boss that he hadn't sent us a quote. So I've been in contact with the company again, they're working on the support, so a bit of dealing in that. Lot of DOT survey activity at the park, the stakes been placed all along 84. Not that it was going to happen. It might be related to the reappraisal they've said they're going to do, but it's very clear now that the strip of land we're going to lose, how many trees, how much of the dog park, etc.
Are you sure that's what it's for?
Yeah, it, it looks to me, the stakes have been placed along the line, that indicate of the DOT plan, so yeah, I think that's...
There's just a lot of flags around here lately.
Yeah, there's a lot more out in the park.
But not a lot of construction.
Yeah, just lots of flags.
The one thing I'd like to point out to council is that there is, when they widen it to grow, there's going to be the permanent easement, and then there's also the temporary construction easement, which is a part that, the last time this came up, we spoke to the people at the DOT, and they said, well, we might be able to work around that, considering it's just a temporary construction easement versus tearing up the dog park.
We're about four feet into the dog park...
Yeah, that's why they didn't...
Where the line is, so we may have to move to 144 feet, and then we will, who knows? Then, on the Union County Amateur Radio Society, we met with them at the park, I think you're all aware, we have some rules about nonprofit events at the park, if they're below a certain size, they don't have to do anything. The Union County Amateur Radio Society complies with the small nonprofit group event rule, less than 15 parking spaces, less than 15 people, they don't need any money, they don't need us to do anything, they don't need electricity.
Yeah, I offered them electricity for their, for their radios, and they go, no, we're using generators and solar panels.
Pretty much meets all the requirements, that normally, if they just call Amy, tell them what they plan, and Amy'd say, yeah, you can do it, there's no need to bump it up to council, because it meets the small event rule. So that's that.
As long as they're out by dusk.
Yeah.
We're running people out like it's nobody's business these days.
Oh, yeah, I'll be on them.
Two questions, although...
I'll, I'll be pulling the gate open switch.
He'll lock you in.
Two, two questions. The equipment will, will leave with, I mean, they'll carry the equipment back and forth, nothing will be left in the park overnight?
No.
Right, okay.
No, I don't want to leave anything.
Bring it with them and take it on the dog.
Okay, good. And then generators, any other noise?
Other than that?
Other than that?
No.
And the noise will stop by dusk, so...
All right, the juicy bit, FEMA. So we met with FEMA about getting our money back to the breach. We, we totaled up around $47,000 so far. We had a discussion with FEMA, we went over each expense we've incurred, and they said, ooh, you can get another 5% as well, for the time Kathy and I need to spend dealing with emailed, phone calls, visits to the park, I guess. So 5% total can be up to 5% total can be added to what we've already got, and I think Mike's point, we need to add that advertising expense to the FEMA claim, because it's directly related to the breach, so we should add that to the expense and get that back as well.
And the 5% is just a flat 5% to cover all your time, or you have to document all your time?
Up to 5%.
It's only about $2,400, so John and I, I might have 15 hours, John maybe had 12 or 10, I think it's good.
But I mean, you have to provide your documented hours to them, or do they just...
They, they were happy with the estimates of hours for the rest of the stuff, like filling the pump with gas and dragging the pump down, dragging the pump back up.
And thank you to you and Kathy both for making yourself available to those meetings and answering all the questions.
They were very positive, saying we've pretty much checked all the boxes. There were a couple questions from the environmental and historic preservation person that came, because they have to do that EHP review on the breach as well. Their questions were, what did you do with the dirt you took out of the dam? They wanted to know the location of where that dirt was placed. I guess they're checking that, that location, had a permit to receive it. It was a construction site, a turkey farm in Mineral Springs, so we gave them that address. And then at the visit at the park, like, where did the riprap come from? They wanted to know the specific quarry that the riprap came out of, that we placed in the breach. So we got that to them now, it was Baker's Quarry and Road. They wanted a write-up, which I've done, did you get it?
I did not get it, I say, I reminded you this morning, did you, did you send it to me yesterday or today?
I think I sent it to you Saturday or Sunday.
I heard, same.
I wrote it up, sent it, good email, because I couldn't find Gigi's email, and I asked her to send it to Gigi, but it's done.
I, I looked for it.
So that's done, we, we've done everything we've been asked to do. Gigi said it's just a matter of her now submitting to somebody in Washington. She said they might get somebody easy, they might not get somebody easy. But the ball's rolling ahead, and they seem pretty confident we're going to get back all the money for the breach.
Great.
And how many people had to come up for this, or virtually?
We had four people here.
Plus a couple people virtually?
No, they met here.
Oh, okay.
I think there may have been one online.
No, well, they were here, but after he left, another gentleman came in my office, and I just gave a synopsis of the meeting. But they, they were very pleased, we had everything organized, all our expenses on the stretch, if we ever became what they needed on a flash drive, and they were, they were very complimentary.
There were, here, there were three FEMA people from the patrol side, and one state person who is the, like, disaster, disaster person from the emergency management, North Carolina.
But they probably spent more money sending people to inspect than what they're going to give us back from the, from grants.
It's not worth it sometimes.
Got, got through the motions, we're going to, I'm pretty confident we're going to get our money back.
Yeah, we're pretty confident they're going to give it back to us.
And that's it for the park.
One last thing related to the ham radio, will you need to be putting up any banners, and will this be interactive for the people to come to the park, to visit the park?
Yes, we would like to put up a banner.
Yeah.
And we hope people interact with us.
Okay.
That's why we're excited to do this in a public place.
So you'll need to reach out to...
...a reception table with material about the club and amateur radio in general to, redo it in public to generate interest in amateur radio.
So you'll need to reach out to Amy about your banner.
Well, it'll be in the park.
If it's in the park.
Oh, it won't be on the corner?
Yeah, just be on our, on our tent.
Oh, okay, perfect. There was a question previously about the dog attack, so I did reach out to Brandon in Animal Control, and basically, they said, if you're at Dogwood Park, and there's a And basically, they said, "If you're at Dogwood Park and there's a loose dog biting somebody or causing trouble, call 911. They'll try to send deputies out right away. If there's just dogs wandering or a homeless person with their dogs, you could call Animal Control. You could call 911 and ask to be dispatched through Animal Control." But they said basically once Animal Control takes the complaint, they take over the case and then basically it's not our business, is what they said. They handle it from there. So if there's a dog bite or a dog whatever, then they'll take over. So they couldn't give me any update about. But they said if you do continually have a homeless person staying in the park to... And I said, "I don't think so. I think this is like a random one-off." So, but they did say just call 911 and they'll either send Animal Control out or send a deputy if there's danger. Thank you, Mr. Lepke, and that brings us to our survey presentation from Mr. Von Hansen of Benchmark. Very excited about this.
So back in November, we initiated a survey of the community to look at parks, recreation and community services. That survey ran for a little bit more than a month. I'm sorry, it began in October, then until mid-December. And we had six hundred and four total responses, but four hundred and seventy-one of those were village residents who we were going to focus our attention on in analyzing and presenting the results. The first question we asked was just a general...
Did you repeat those numbers?
There were six hundred and four total responses. Of those, four hundred and seventy-one were village residents.
Okay, I thought you said seven or something. Sorry, that's why I asked.
The first question we asked was a general question, just how do you rate the current public recreation amenities and programs offered by the village? And it was, the response was basically, "Very, it's very okay." Out of five stars, the answer was around a three, a little bit higher from most people that responded to the survey. A great question that John had suggested was to be able to look into when people were responding to a survey about parks and recreation, especially in a community like Wesley Chapel where a lot of the neighborhoods already have certain types of amenities. Wanted to see who was, who was already served in some way by some sort of recreational amenity in their neighborhood. So we asked if they did have something in their subdivision. About two-thirds of the people did, a third didn't. And the most common types of amenities were things like swimming pools, walking trails and playgrounds. We asked how frequently people tended to visit Dogwood Park. About sixty percent said that they were occasional visitors. About fifteen percent said several times a month and about ten percent, a little more than ten percent, tended either weekly or daily. Very small number of daily people, but they're probably very committed. The amount of time that's spent at Dogwood Park, most people spend between thirty minutes and an hour there. Another good chunk, almost forty percent, spend an hour to two hours there. And that's probably really influenced by the types of activities and the amenities they utilize there, which are almost ninety percent utilize walking trails, about a third uses playground, a fifth uses dog park and some smaller numbers use a fishing pond or go there to picnic or do other, other types of activities. But walking is by far the most popular activity that you have out there at the park. We asked too, the community members thought the most, the most important people, a group of people to provide recreational opportunities to, elementary school age children, as one would probably guess, were the those that people felt were the most important to receive this type of amenity, followed by middle school age children. Then adults, seniors and high school age children were tied for third, with our youngest infants and toddlers being last.
Was there any statistical breakdown on that ranking or was it just...
I, uh, there are, for that question, I can tell you how...
Or is it some, if it's coming up, that's fine?
No, no, no. For things like, I think that was just a...
Just a ranking?
Ranking, let's see. So you can rank each one of those as being the most very important, somewhat important or not important. So this was a relative scaled score essentially.
Well, is your data just for the four hundred and seventy-one Wesley Chapel residents?
That's what we're presenting.
Okay, because the Parks and Recreation Trust, one to the state, they don't care if it's just Wesley Chapel, we need the full rate.
We asked what types of additional amenities or activities people would like to see at Dogwood Park. We put together a pretty long list. These aren't all of them. The top four, these were, additional seating was the top one. The top four received over twenty-five percent of response from, from the totality of the respondents. We had a lot of suggestions and the other category, about twenty-five percent of people responded to something else that wasn't on the list. Predominant response there was pickleball courts. And between twenty and twenty-five percent, the others were community gardens, disc golf and outdoor places. So each one of those received twenty to thirty percent of response. We asked people about the parking situation at Dogwood Park. A little bit more than half said they never had any trouble when they go out there in terms of finding a parking space, but about a third said it's sometimes difficult to park there. A very small number is in the parking lots usually full, I'm not sure when they're going. Some small number of people do park at South Brook to go over there. And an even smaller number said that they've been there, but they just could not find parking at Dogwood Park. And that may be something related to, I don't know if it's readily visible, but the overflow parking is available. People tend to use it when you...
People are using it.
So this question is one that was longer than is displayed on the screen. We explained what the cost is of adding, you know, first we asked, you know, are you in favor of having restroom facilities at Dogwood Park as part of overall plan? Here's what we estimate the cost to be for utilities, for constructing the actual structure. We're noting the ongoing maintenance required for that. And so about a little bit more than two-thirds said that they would be in favor of that. The installation of restroom, permanent restroom facilities at Dogwood Park. A number of the open ended responses that we received, which are also provided to you there, we're not presenting on those, but just so that you can read them, were questions and comments regarding restroom facilities. We also noted that picnic shelter had been considered being constructed at Dogwood Park in the plan. Asked whether that would, you know, improve the usefulness of the park, about half and half, yes and no. Plan provided additional information and the opportunity presented to construct a picnic shelter in concert with a restroom facility, what the cost of that would be, what the impact on taxes would be. About seventy percent said they would not want to add that additional cost. We also asked whether people felt there is a need to have a, an indoor community center. We provided an estimated cost for that, et cetera. About again, seventy percent of people said they did not think that was a necessary addition to the park. Those that we did ask about, you know, whether they would like that, asked what kinds of activities they would like for it to be used for. And so this is information that somebody could use to see where there might be some demand for programming of some sort. So art and music, crafting classes, medals for private events, senior programming, community clubs, group exercises, child focused programs. So clearly, some of the things the pastor mentioned earlier that the church is doing are certainly things where we notice and demand and potentially there's some opportunity to do more of that. We asked whether or not people had attended events at Dogwood Park in the past. About again, sixty percent said they had attended. About forty percent said they had not. We asked people whether the village should sponsor more events at Dogwood Park. Again, about two-thirds said that they thought the village should. About a third said they did not. And if they would be interested in having more events, what kinds of events would they like to see? So about two-thirds, holiday festivals, they could choose as many of these as they liked. Holiday festivals, food festivals, concerts were the top three on there. Some general support for some other things, but not above fifty percent. We asked people whether they would be most likely to attend an event at Dogwood Park overwhelmingly. Saturday afternoons seemed to be the most popular, but Sunday afternoons have a pretty good response rate as well. We asked whether people would be more likely to come, yes.
So, um, the X's just mean no one responded with that? In the box like...
I think Monica put that together like that just for the sake of...
Right, so nothing was, it was an option, this one chose it.
It was just a graphic representation. There's no response from the sides on either side of Saturday morning. We didn't ask about Sunday morning, we didn't ask about during daytime.
Okay, thanks.
So that's what people would be more likely to attend an event if there were food vendors available on site. So over seventy-five percent of people said that they would. We asked a similar question regarding whether or not, if there were alcohol beverages available to purchase at community events, would people be more or less likely or unchanged to come to events? About a quarter said it'd be more likely, but about sixteen percent said it'd be less likely. Most people said it would affect their impression of corporalcy. So in addition to questions directly about parks and recreation amenities, we also asked some additional questions regarding other community services and amenities. So we asked people to just rank in order of what the importance they felt these were in terms of priority for the village to be, you know, dedicating its tax funds to transportation and road improvements were number one, law enforcement, public safety, parks and recreation facilities, number three. So that's kind of the order what people currently feel is most important in terms of how the village should be spending its money. We explained the current situation, you know, with the contract for one deputy, what that costs, what each additional deputy would cost to the village in terms of the dollar amount and tax rate and asked people whether they thought the village should contract for more deputies, for additional deputies to be on the one. Currently, about seventy percent said that they would. Of those, we then asked if you answered yes to tell us how many deputies you thought would be the most appropriate number to contract for. And so about half the people said two and about half the people said more than two. The demographics just of the four hundred and seventeen Wesley Chapel residents who responded to the survey. We asked about the size of their households. So, pretty good distribution of household sizes. We assumed that the households with fewer or more people in them probably include children with regard to, you know, looking at the Parks and Recreation side of things. About seventy-ish percent have more than, likely had children present. Looking at the age breakdown of the age of the household members, this is the universal response. We said, "How many people do you have in each age group in your home?" Totally enough and divided into these different age groups. So about thirty, the village Wesley Chapel's age distribution, about twenty-five percent, about a quarter of the residents are under the age of eighteen, seventy-five percent above of these. About thirty percent of the members of households of the people that took the survey were under the age of eighteen, so a little bit more represented on the households with children's side than you are households without children. We asked just for, you know, our knowledge just to, you know, gauge the, the level of need that exists in the community for things like adaptive playground equipment, things of that nature, other types of facilities for not just children, but people of all ages at the park in particular to be able to, be able to use it if they have some sort of physical disability that limits their ability to engage in typical recreational activities. About, you know, twelve percent of people said that they did have somebody in their household that would have a physical challenge preventing them from using regular, we quote-unquote, regular types of recreational equipment or facilities or amenities. And we also asked how long people responding to the survey had resided with Wesley Chapel. So there's a very good distribution there as well with people with, you know, different length of residency groups. So you're not just hearing from people that have been here forever. You're not just hearing from people that moved here two years ago. So.
Were any of the numbers drastically changed when in fact it is people that were not residents of Wesley Chapel?
The only thing where there's a real difference is that when you turn off the filter for people that responded positively to residing within corporate lines, we gave them the link to the map to go find their address in case they were confused, is they were more willing to spend your money than people that live inside, in the village. It didn't change the response, but there was some movement, some small amount of movement, if you had to make it. I will also say that, you know, after we got kind of the first batch of responses and then on the survey, we've gotten about a hundred and sixty or so fairly early on, you know, we got a big number right off the bat. And just kind of watching it over time, scrolling through the responses, and there really wasn't any change as different groups were touched by different means of outreach and different sharings on social media, different emails that went out or different signs that went up or who, who John talked to or who the mayor talked to or anything like that. The response, the responses were fairly consistent. There wasn't a time when it went from, we all use walking trails to we all go fishing or something like that. That stayed pretty constant. And really after the first week or so, you could have cut it off and had a very similar response to what you got. But it was great when we got even more responses throughout.
I don't remember, did you, in any of these, like, do you want more of this? Do you want, you know, more law enforcement, more amenities, whatever? Did you mention, do you, how you feel about a tax increase to pay for these things?
We mentioned what the cost is.
And, but I don't see anything that says, "Oh, yeah, I'd pay more taxes for this." I don't see anything that said that they're willing to do it.
We, we said, "Well, what would it cost on the tax rate?"
It was right up the question. Oh, okay.
Yeah, could you send us a copy of the questions, kind of to that point, to see the detail?
And on the deputy question, so it says, "Would you be in favor of the village contracting for additional dedicated deputies?" If yes, how many? So if they said an additional two, is that Brandon plus two?
That is the, the total number.
Total, the total number, okay.
I'll, I'll read it. I can read that question.
And while he's looking that up, John, a quick question for you. Does this check the box if we decide to go after any type of grant from the Part F organization as far as the level of detail?
And I noticed a bunch, there were several comments about the cost of the bathrooms. I think people don't realize that we have to run water and sewer to the bathrooms, which is a very hefty expense.
Is that included in the estimate on the question?
Yes.
Awesome.
Because there are several comments about like, "Oh, my gosh, that's unreasonable."
But that may require financing instead of a one-time walk-through payment.
But their, their comments were like, "That's too expensive, like, that's not reasonable." Well, it is when you factor in running water and sewer, the long distance.
So we, for all the questions regarding whether something would, you know, cost something more than annual tax bill, we've benchmarked it to a, a home value of three hundred thousand dollars. And so the question about the deputy, we said, "The village Wesley Chapel currently contracted Union County Sheriff's Office to provide one dedicated deputy for the village. Expanding the number of deputies dedicated to the village would add approximately twenty-six dollars fifty cents to the annual tax bill of the owner of a three hundred thousand dollar home for each additional deputy. Would you be in favor of the village contracting for additional deputies?"
So Paul, do you think we have sufficient information now to form the basis of a revised master plan?
I, yeah, I think we've heard what the amenities are, what the needs are. I think we take it at face value is what people said they want to see in here.
How is the response for this compared to the comprehensive plan survey? The number seems similar to me, but I can't remember.
I can actually... I can actually.
But they were both, like, they're both reliable, because this is like one...
Yeah, they were both statistically significant, I'm just curious.
I mean, I think it is interesting to, I was shocked by the deputy question. But I think the ranking of community services, amenities has made, has stayed number one, transportation, road improvement since I've been a resident.
And I would say stormwater management that make the list because the people who have the stormwater problems probably didn't do the survey.
Well, Vaughn and I talked about that, because I was shocked, and he said, it impacts such a low number of people that those of us who are blessed to not have stormwater problems.
I think the number was higher, I'm having trouble finding...
You can just email it later, it's fine, I'm just curious.
So there were several comments about the dog park, not all of them complimentary. Are there any plans to improve or plant grass or extend the area, or is there any plans to do anything like that?
Area's about to get shortened.
We had a talk, like, committee, one of the folks I like to talk about him and something, like putting wood chips down, which is his chief, and they decided, no, we don't want to do that. His dogs chew him, he gets splinters in the mouth, he gets splinters in the feet. And then we don't want to do anything on the dog park.
Somebody suggested planting grass and...
Well, it's in the shade.
The number of responses for the prior survey was seven hundred and forty, but it was open for quite some time, sorry, because it was already open when I started.
Yeah.
And we closed until December.
Not that big a difference.
For the question, how frequently do you and your family members visit Dogwood Park? For residents, fifty-eight percent was occasionally. If you split out non-residents, how often did they say they go to Dogwood Park?
It'll take a second, but...
Sure, sure.
Don't have all this on top of your head.
John, you've got a couple shout-outs in the comments.
I don't know.
Could we do a quick sidebar, just for, up on the screen? I think with the federal consent agenda, I just need to move that money to make sure our percentages, like in the budget, when I went through and shaved your numbers over a hundred percent, I just need to move things around a little bit so we can manage our funds. The last entry, we don't have that type of income, that was just a beverage out on my part, maybe in the budget. I just took it for another type of income. So we're just moving it into the other franchise tax.
So you're going to put it on the February consent?
If you can just approve it now, it makes my... There's nothing, I mean, we're just taking out consent, the emergency dam breach, seventy-five hundred, even, for like four minutes.
Can we approve it if it's not on the agenda? Can we approve it if it's not on the agenda?
Yeah, I just need to say, I should approve it, that's fine.
Go ahead, hold on, pause Kathy, Vaughn?
So the, if you look at non-residents, their breakdown in terms of times that the park was, five percent less than thirty minutes, about forty-five percent thirty minutes to an hour, forty-five percent an hour to two hours, and about four percent one to two hours.
And they visited it occasionally, several times a month?
I'm sorry.
That was a solid question.
Sorry.
Occasionally was forty-eight percent.
So it's about the same.
Yeah. And several times a month was twenty-two and a half percent.
All right, so any questions for Vaughn, or do you want to marinate on this? There's no action that needs to be taken on this tonight. Vaughn will meet with John offline to talk about what you need for the survey. This will just be a guiding document for council for the budget, upcoming budget meeting, and for the master plan for Parks and Recreation.
Has this been shared with the, what used to be Parks and Rec Committee?
It has not been shared with anybody, because I wanted it shared at one time. And now that it has been shared with council in this meeting, it can be shared.
Yeah, I think I'd ask that you send this electronically, you don't have to print out all these. Let's send it out to everyone who's on the Parks and Rec Committee slash Events Committee, just so they can marinate on it before the next meeting.
Really, it should probably go to everybody, planning board, board of adjustment. Yeah, put it on the sunshine list, and let's...
But direct email all the people on the Communications Committee so they could say they have it for the next meeting? Send the survey directly to all the people on Communications and Rec, the Events Committee. I know the name kept changing.
And Planning Board.
And the sunshine list, everybody.
Yeah. So if you have any further questions that come up for Vaughn, just email them to me and I'll compile them and give you answers back.
We can, because, we can get it very specific with multi variables and stuff like that, so if you're interested in...
I love the format, by the way.
You know me.
Yeah, the format is very well done.
Yeah, should have some doozies.
I pay younger people to help with that.
I just want the answers, I don't want to have to do the work.
Monica's very great, I saw you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. I appreciate y'all's benchmarked hard work on this and doing it at a very reasonable price. So if y'all get any questions for Vaughn, I will get them to it. So that brings us to... So council, do...
It's just shifting a little bit of money around, it is not...
Was this in the agenda packet?
No.
It was not in the agenda packet, I don't know, you can approve it, I just forgot to do it.
I'm not in favor of approving it.
Yeah, I'd like to take a look at it for more than, you know, thirty seconds.
Okay, so we will put it on the agenda for February? All right, so that brings us to the Events and Programs Committee, Mr. Dowell. If you'll please approach the podium.
Good evening, mayor, council, village staff, fellow citizens, and happy new year. Obviously, we are two weeks in, but happy new year to everyone. Obviously, I'm here to provide the latest update from the Events and Programs Committee that met about a month ago, since we had, obviously, the Christmas holiday. We did not meet at the end of the month and met on the Thursday after your guys' meeting last month. I first want to start my update by sharing my condolences with Mr. Oliver. Unfortunately, he is now our former chairman and his family, who recently found out that he has cancer, as some of us know. And he has been a great asset to the committee and the village, and his presence and input during committee meetings will be missed, for sure. But we did have a successful meeting, though, last month. As Vaughn just greatly presented, the committee is excited to see the results that just came for that. I was very excited to see that. And I would like to extend an invite to Vaughn to come to our Events and Programs Committee at the end of the month to talk about the findings that we found from the survey, as they will be very influential in what the committee decides to do when it comes to programming, for sure. In response to the last meeting, moving to the social media side, the, obviously, the council approved the use of Instagram into the Village of Arsenal to communicate with the public. And we discussed a formation of a, and formation of a communication social media strategy. This includes posts that were discussed, but are not limited to posting of such meeting times, such as this one, or our committee meeting, planning board, or things like that, and the agendas that go with those types of meetings. A summary of what happened during those meetings, along with holidays and events and things like that that we'll be working on at our next meeting. One thing that was discussed was whether we should bring these proposed posts to the council, and is that something that you would like us to do? It obviously was discussed that those types of things would go through staff, such as this mom power and whatnot, and then would possibly go up, but just a bit more clarification would be great, like that. And I'll pause there and get your guys' thoughts if you can on that.
Well, if you bring your strategy, right, to council for approval, then I think it's fine to take it back and have it funnel through staff, what you want to do.
Just think about it being very specific in that way. Well, a strategy can be high-level, you may have a more procedural detail, so that there won't be any confusion of what's okay for you guys just to do or not. I mean, you know, you know what I'm saying.
Yes, I do. And following up on what was discussed last council meeting while I was here, Ms. Bailey, I did find that the UNC School of Government does have a social media class for local governments. It is entitled "Top Ten Primer Use of Social Media for Local Elected Officials." Obviously, we are not elected, but that is what I found to be most applicable. I did find that this was a free program to take a part of. It is a one-day, seventy-five-minute Zoom class that we all could attend if you would so like us to. The one thing is that it is on May seventh, it's, I believe it was a Wednesday. I don't know exactly what time it was, it didn't stay on there, and I didn't have enough time, as I was researching in the recent days, to contact them or anything like that, but I can definitely reach out to them and find out what time that is.
Sure, it's between...
And sometimes if you attend, you get the recording after.
Okay.
So even if Amy attended, she could get the recording to share with the committee. You might, yeah.
All right.
So keep, keep digging.
I will keep looking into that and bring what I find back to you guys as to the next council meeting. Moving on to the topic of events, I'm pleased to let the council know that committee member Aaron LaCroix will be the coordinator for our first event of the year on May third at the park. And I'm also excited to, possibly, we were, I was being discussed with the mayor a little bit in the previous weeks, was possibly working out with the pastors, as the pastor of Silo was here earlier, and I wish he was here so I could discuss this a bit in front of him, but that's okay. Possibly working with the pastors and the churches in our local area and in the side of the village to possibly have events at the churches, as we've heard the dam may be delayed a bit further, as was not initially projected when we did make the schedule for the events that we were planning. So I am hopeful that we will be able to work with the different churches within the community and have a great partnership with the committee and the village and those churches. Finally, diving into our next committee meeting, we will restart the discussion of our community conversations that, with different speakers that Ms. Bletso reminded me of last committee meeting. Some of the organizations from our community to talk about the topic that we were thinking about included the fire department, county planting department, county water departments, things like that. You guys should have a document with some of those different organizations that we were thinking of there as well. And there, I've also met discussions about possibly CPR class from the American Heart Foundation and/or the American Red Cross, self-defense class possibly from the sheriff's office and things like that. We were discussing possibly having a small entrance fee of about five dollars just to make sure that people are actually coming in, usually when they charge, you charge funds to someone, they are more likely to come than if you just sign them up for free. And obviously, that would decrease the amount, like, a hundred people sign up, well, this space can't really fit a hundred people necessarily, depending on that activity, of course. So if you could, and only six or fifty show up, then that would be lovely to be able to know how many we have. And yeah, the final details will be worked on that hopefully at our next committee meeting, and I'll have more details for you at our next council meeting, so, anything else?
At the last meeting, the mayor suggested the 4-H Coordinator.
Yes.
Any luck with that?
We, that was discussed a bit, that is one of the organizations that we do have on the list. Some others that I had included the superintendent of the schools possibly coming in and discussing the status of the schools and whatnot. So there are a couple of different organizations, possibly even the State Treasurer Office with the NC Cash Program and whatnot, just to bring awareness to different areas of government that people may not necessarily be aware of.
And in light of the transition with Gordon and Joel, Deb has volunteered to go full steam ahead with coordinating the art contest again. And I have reached out to the Soul and Water, and we have a call tomorrow at ten. And I'm going to try to go ahead and see if I can get on her books. However, that may look, if it might look like summertime in the park programming or monthly things here, I just don't know what her availability is yet. So I can report back to Joel to report to the committee.
Also, Joel, the next meeting is a week from Thursday on the twenty-third of January. Kathy, we've got another event that evening at five-thirty that's reserved, but it doesn't say on the calendar what that is.
And the HOA meeting, so we're just meeting...
So the Parks and Rec meeting will be in the chat, will be in the chat. Okay, I want to give you the hard copy of that.
Okay, fantastic, yes, thank you very much.
Any questions for John?
Further questions or ideas that you may have for organizations that we could possibly partner?
I did want to just add to your comments. And you're doing a great job, by the way, I just have to catch you in the back. You really are, you've really stepped up, and I appreciate it. The, there's, because we're the events and programs, programs and events committees, so we've got both programs and things like, for example, having live music and food trucks here at Village, at Village Hall. You know, we have some really great bands that we have in our area. So that would be, you know, something we could do. And, you know, have some events here at Village Hall, we don't have to have everything at the park. And some of these, some of these things are just information, like, you know, say gas, gas safety in your home, like, people like gas, or council on aging, what are some tips for elder care and stuff like that. But then we've also, we were talking about doing some things like the sheriff's office, self-defense for women, or maybe men if you want to do that, too. American Red Cross, teaching CPR, I mean, so, that may cost money, but we haven't really looked into if it would or not. But these are just a lot of things that we could be doing. And I noticed that we're reading some of the comments, people seem to really want more things. They want more events, more programs and stuff, so. And something else that the mayor and I were talking about doing is also, and we'll bring this back and actually have the more details, but you know how we've got the coffee mugs and the pins and the, you know, slap bracelets and stuff? We basically have used all those, and we'd like to get some more. So we're going to be looking at some possibilities and bringing them to you guys. And you can, you know, see if you think this would be a good thing to give guest speakers or people who come and just as a gift, or just paraphernalia, you know?
Just don't put dates on it.
Sorry?
Don't put dates on it.
Don't put dates on it?
Yeah, it just says Village of Wesley Chapel.
Yeah, well, you have to admit now, the date was important.
Amy found some beautiful pins, like, I'm like, I want a pin.
Yeah, a little tail pin.
I'm sorry, kind of tagging on what you were talking about, is Union County also has a lot of events and everything else, so that, just kind of making sure of what their calendar is so that we don't end up conflicting with them, that, you know, we complement with things that aren't offered elsewhere.
Yes.
Because I'd hate for us to do something, and it's like the week before or the week right after they did something, and we're just like, okay, yeah.
Yes, I understand.
The county parks directors get together quarterly for a meeting, but typically Wesley Chapel doesn't attend those meetings. If that's something that we can figure out a way to do, it's usually a lunch meeting, that's the problem during the week.
We have an employee.
Yeah, Amy could go, or John.
John's our actual park director.
Well, just, that, one of the things they do at that meeting is they share their calendar.
Is it the Parks and Rec meeting with the county or...
It's the county Parks and Rec meeting that they have quarterly luncheons, where they get together to talk about what they're doing, their communities, and how they don't compete. So they don't compete with other events.
So this is similar to probably Wumo, but just the Parks and Rec Department, got you?
It's all Parks and Rec directors.
Okay.
Deb, was that all you wanted to share?
Are you able to send me some details on that?
Well, just to clarify, it's Parks and Rec directors who are staff of the towns?
There you go.
Yeah.
I tend not to mean, you know.
You do attend?
I've been to a couple a few years ago. Have a slice of pizza, find out what their plans are for...
So if they have food, you're in, if not, you're not.
Well, what's the main purpose is if you're having a problem at your park that everybody else has either already experienced and they have a solution for it, it's a great way to just swap out solutions and things like that.
They're attended by staff of all the Parks and Rec departments in the municipalities and the county.
So if you don't want to go, could I ask that you and Amy coordinate one of you going?
Yeah, I don't mind going, I mean, I've got... Yeah, I don't mind going, I mean, I've got bad things to do, but.
Well, I mean, if you don't want to go, Amy could go, Amy, are you willing to go and report back?
Or.
Yeah, I mean, we could always just task Amy to go and report back.
Maybe alternate.
Alternate, that's what I was getting ready to say, some sort of alternate, just to keep your face in front of them as our park director and everything else. I mean, you know, you have that big title now.
Joel, what is that, May third, your first event in the park, what is that, May third?
It was Spring Fling, I believe it is entitled.
And you still doing that?
Yes, we are still, it's not at the park, it's gonna be here at Village Hall, actually. And that's scheduled with a movie. And so if Ms. LaCroix was here, I would bring her up to, because I know I haven't got the latest update from her as it's been almost a month. But I know she has gotten some documents, is planning out exactly what everyone's gonna work on and different details and whatnot. And she's been in contact with Ms. Mumpower on some of those types of things of food vendors and things like that, for sure.
The details, working on the details are on the agenda for the next meeting.
Correct.
Balance house, food truck, phase eight, a lot of the details.
And, and one of the, you know, one of the reasons we wanted to, well, lack of volunteers, but one of the real reasons I wanted to combine the committee and take the word "park" out of the name is we really, like, even in, even in some of the comments on the survey, like, we don't have to do everything at the park, right? Like, we have this building, and we have this parking lot, like, we can do stuff here. Movie nights have been successful here, and we can use this building for classes or meetings. So I'm happy to think that maybe there's the potential of this space being used more.
Yes, for sure, absolutely.
Any further questions for Joel?
No, but I've got one maybe for Amy, if she's done right. With the event that we're having with the ham radio guys, is that something we can advertise on our webpage? Or is that something, we're just gonna let that, let them do the role of advertising?
That is really.
I think traditionally we stuck with our events, and we don't have a.
We get a lot of requests to advertise stuff, so we had to have to figure out where the line is.
That's why I asked.
Yeah.
Well, I just, the ham operator, I mean, that's huge. I mean, in a crisis, when everything goes out, we have another Hugo, and we have whatever, and we lose, those are the people that will keep in touch, and those are the people that know, you know.
And that's why they wanted to do it at the park versus doing it at the parking lot of a church that nobody goes to.
Right, I mean, that's a very, very essential safety issue, having ham radio operators.
The council could certainly make a motion to include it this time if they would so like.
And we'll have Facebook and Instagram, we're trying to reset password for Instagram, so.
Because any programs that we have, I think we should advertise, I mean, that kind of qualifies that.
Yeah, I do think, kind of to the mayor's point, we need to be careful because everybody, it's like, oh, I want to do this, why didn't you advertise that? We have to be careful of what's a sponsored event and what's not. I don't disagree, this is an important type of event. I'm just saying, I think we, we should have some sort of guidelines so that we can defend our decisions.
Well, they didn't specifically ask, so I think this particular case, we'll just let it go, but I see your point.
So we might need to.
Might then change the scope for the small.
Fifteen parking spots. Maybe we should see how this goes before we.
If you start advertising, you think, oh, well, we're parking, and then we're gonna get complaints. There was nowhere at the park.
And maybe that's something that council needs to think about and put on a future agenda is a policy for, we have a sponsorship policy, but like, where's, where do we draw the line in the sand? Like, who, is it co-sponsoring events, like, what is it that we want to support publicly?
Something like this, though, is an essential service that they provide, and that to me says a lot there. I mean, it's not, I mean, you know, like, Easter egg hunts are awesome, but that's not, that's not something that can benefit people in the long run. So I think that's a big, you know, line in the sand right here.
Amy?
Another idea, too, if, talk about kind of our website, they can just put it on the calendar instead of saying reserved, to say, for the park, National Ham, or the Indian Ham Radio.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great idea.
Could, could the village also, and with the part of the committee, also add those organizations to a list of organizations that want to teach about it?
Absolutely.
Different technology and whatnot, so you could encourage those groups to possibly come to a Parks and Rec committee meeting and be part of public comment, of course, and possibly we can add them onto the schedule whenever that time could be appropriate, of course, and then obviously, that's a village-sponsored event at that point. So that is something that also the council could consider and encourage organizations to do in the future, of course.
Yeah, that's awesome, that's a good idea.
Because then they'll come to us instead of us searching for them necessarily, so.
And we know Deb will be at that ham radio meeting.
You got that right.
And obviously, you guys can also post on the Untraditional Park Facebook page as well.
Thank you, Joel.
You're most welcome.
Good job.
Thank you.
All right. That gives us to the planning department. The county stormwater study update, to my knowledge, Vaughn can speak if I'm wrong, is, there is no update.
I talked to Emily, wait a second, Kathy, I shared with her something.
I told her that there were, they have some applications for bids coming for Christmas.
Oh, yeah.
And they're looking at having a contract this week.
But we have not heard yet, per what was in your council packet? If they picked somebody yet or not? And the encroachment study, do you want to talk about it, or you want me to?
So the engineer with Labella who's working on it said that, oh, listen. They've been doing some data collection and they've been compiling a model that was provided by the Northland Department of Urban Management for the hydrology along that section of the creek. So there are the beginning stages, but I think they're gonna meet with Emily on Friday to begin the process of moving forward beyond data collection. At some point, they'll probably, soon, they will need to actually go out there onto the property and do some.
Again, we're thankful FEMA's pretty busy.
Very lucky right now.
Yeah.
We're a very small problem in their basket of problems.
Item C is the, so as you know, Piedmont Natural Gas is relocating their easement. They want to use like a triangle up here that is heavily wooded. I thought it was up here, they want to come back here, but the triangle's here, isn't it?
It's over here by Black Rock, where you come down, go aside and.
It's at the corner.
It's at that corner, not this corner. So, and they also want to drive.
I'm sorry, it's at the corner with Aston, not the corner with.
I thought it was up here.
Which is this direction?
Yeah, I thought the corner, yeah, the wooded corner is here, yeah. So they want to use fifteen hundred square feet up here that is heavily wooded. And then they also want to have the ability to drive down our road and come back here and go into Blacks on this way to access, so they don't have to take down more trees. So that is still being discussed. They also have offered, right now, they've offered fifteen hundred dollars to compensate for the use of the wooded area up here. However, Kathy has reached out to several landscaping companies, she reached out to four. Three do not do this kind of work, one does. The urban forester surveyed the triangle, and it was like fifty to seventy. Nice trees, and he proposed a plan to like reforest it, and the quote Kathy got was almost twenty thousand dollars to replace it.
It was high, he could not, he could not find the sized parts that he wanted, so he had to go for parts. So most of the cost is in the seventy trees times two hundred, which is a big number. So he's also proposing putting in a watering, not a real formal watering system, but some hoses back there to make sure the trees survive so they water on a timer for a period of time. That would be ours that we could use or something later if we wanted to.
So what I am, what we're asking for, we do not want to be the holdup in the PNG train. We don't want to be like two months, a month from now, they blame, oh, we didn't get to get started because we were held up with the Village of Wesley Chapel. So what I'm asking is that you authorize me in conjunction with George and Vaughn and Kathy to negotiate and approve the agreement for the easement, for the triangle, and for driving on our land during construction, and to see what we can be compensated for, for refilling our station, and come back and report to you when we get to that point.
Well, I'd rather have the trees left alone, and I would have money to pay for the trees that tear down.
Well, you also have utility companies that will just.
Take it.
Take it anyway.
So I feel better because I've just said that.
Well, maybe when they see twenty thousand dollars, they might not want that triangle again. I don't, I don't know what we'll get, but I'm asking council to not, not hold this up for us to move forward.
I make a motion for us to approve the mayor and legal counsel, the village attorney, to negotiate and approve a contract with PNG regarding the easement.
Construction, and the compensation for the corner.
Well, that would be part of the negotiations.
So negotiation for the easement and the compensation, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion?
Yeah, so you're authorizing who?
The mayor and then council.
Legal counsel.
Legal coun, George, yes, village attorney, I said village attorney.
I thought you said village council.
No, I'm sorry, I may have said, but I said.
I assumed council, I'm not.
Yeah, no, 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 this is getting us out of that.
That also would be, the mayor and council are very negotiating the entire package.
Any further discussion? All in favor? I will report back to you as soon as I have findings. Vaughn, do you have anything else on the planning docket you would like to share? Unless you want to talk briefly about?
Just very, very briefly, the, currently, the stormwater regulations are part of the zoning ordinance, is part of the overall, all land use regulations. We have done a first draft of taking, removing those from the zoning ordinance and making them a standalone stormwater ordinance, so we ensure that they're generally applicable to anything that occurs. Also removes some confusion and burden telling people that are engaging in land subdivision activity that they need to look in the zoning ordinance to review the stormwater. And so they would take place, they would replace an existing virtually unused article in the code of ordinances right now in chapter one fifty-six. So that's gonna go to the planning boards for their initial review. That's something that we can go ahead and do sooner rather than later. But we're, you know, still working on subdivision zoning matters. Getting those ordinances drafted to protect the planning boards.
Once that's adapted, do we have to go through a recalification of those ordinances?
So we would, following the enactment of a new set of ordinances, they would be, go back through immunity code to get put into the system, so.
Make sure we factor in the expense for that.
It's going to impact the budget, this is one of the things that we initially had the opportunity to pay like twenty-two hundred every single year to update our ordinances, but given historically, we don't change anything, we opted not to do that. So these are two, three thousand dollar changes, but once we get them done, it won't cost us anything more.
I just wanted to make sure council knew that there was an expense with that.
All right, any questions for Vaughn? The next item on the agenda is the commercial center development update. I see a beautiful face back there, I don't know if she wants to talk to us or not. The last meeting, council did authorize me to enter into the easement agreement pending Georgia's revisions. And I know I've seen some stuff go back and forth today. So as you're here, would you like to say anything, Ms. Partey?
We received the comments and are fine with those, so in our estimation, the document is ready for execution. We just need to clarify that little highlighted piece on the very front about the no-owner and whether or not they have a due trust. So we'll get that clarified, you take that off the document, and I'll send it over for signature. All the exhibits were in, in what, in an order you expect them to be, they're not tied together?
I'm sorry, is that, yeah, yeah, that's fine, well, I think, I don't know if they asked for a copy of the survey and the legal descriptions were based off of, I don't know.
I think we did ask that.
I think we just needed, that's, it's not an exhibit, but just to see the survey and the legal descriptions were taken from.
The only issue with that is I can give you, I can give you the survey that has the property name, but I don't know that we've got pins in the ground, like surveyable points, for that stormwater easement. That's kind of been a, just a pad-produced area.
Uh, okay, so, well, yeah, I would assume there's some drawing that shows computer points just so we can take a look at it.
Maybe it's the exhibit D that I attached that just shows that portion of the storm, of the easement.
Okay, yeah, I guess, it just doesn't have any, it didn't have any measurements on it. I guess, well, I don't have it on me. So you're saying that that was created by CAD and then they pulled the measurements off of CAD? Like, they don't have.
That's right.
Gotcha. That should be fine, I just didn't, I just didn't look at it closely because I assumed it was a survey based off of. So that should be fine?
Okay, perfect.
Do you have any other questions or comments for council while you're here?
Do you prefer that we sign first, or do you want me to send it to you for signature first?
Let me ask my attorney, George.
Doesn't matter, that's all reference.
It's fine, if you want to sign it first and send it over.
I'll do that.
Okay, so, development is currently happening. Vaughn, do we know when Taco Bell's opening? Oh, he's busy. Do we know when Taco Bell's opening?
I have no idea.
I look forward to seeing David drinking a Baja Blast at our next council meeting. Highway eighty-four widening update. I don't have anything other than we passed our resolution now to be part of the project. For item C, NC DOT project, I did speak with DOT last week about the roundabout at Wesley Chapel and Potter Road. It is still, it is still slated for construction this summer. Keep your fingers and eyes and toes crossed because the stoplight has been hanging now at Shamwood for a good two months and not activated. But I did talk to Charlie, and he did say, and I'm gonna read it because he's the engineer, not me. He sent a financial summary, and he said, "The plan is to submit the project for shortfall funds this fall in hopes that CRPTO will select it and fund the overruns. If not selected, DOT will contribute an additional one hundred fifty thousand in resurfacing dollars to help reduce the overrun." That would save us seventy-five thousand dollars. The final overrun amount, estimates for constructions, and condemnations. And we are responsible for fifty percent of those overruns. And I'm opening that document to tell you that the estimated overruns are. It's like Christmas. Overruns are seven hundred seventy-three thousand dollars. You say it real fast, it's not quite as fancy. Seven hundred seventy-three thousand dollars. So we'd be on the project, we'd be on the hook for half of that. So if we do not get shortfall funding, we would be headed to that bank account where we have some money to break out four hundred some thousand dollars. As we have already signed that paperwork, dotted the i's and the t's, crossed the t's. Temporary lane at Newtown and Cuthbertson, they are still on track for spring construction. Plans are still being reviewed. They had a few back and forth things, but they should be starting when it warms up at night. And the roundabout at Newtown and Cuthbertson, there's not currently an update on that, right?
Construction December twenty-twenty-eight.
Really?
How long is, so, email from.
Today? I don't. I haven't, I haven't, I don't think so.
I thought he was just making it up as.
I thought you were making it up, twenty-twenty-eight?
Three years.
I believe that when it happened.
Since it's only taken us eight years to get the other.
Right. Right. Did I miss that?
So he said, yeah, I'm, this is the question I asked Sean the other day.
Okay.
Lee emailed me, he emailed you something, then he emailed me something.
Oh, okay.
So they're beginning the design process and plan to go to destruction in the summer 2028.
Well, that is fantastic. So for the public, roundabout at Newtown and Cuthbertson, construction December 2028.
Summer.
Summer.
It's cooled down.
Oh, I heard December.
So it means December.
That's even better.
So it means December.
One, one point you said, they were also somehow looking at doing something in Lester Davis in Newtown because. We're gonna, we think we have funds to start studying that intersection. We think we've been awarded funds to start studying that intersection as part of the next critical intersection.
So Von, right now we have two critical intersections, right, that we've?
We have, we're, yeah, so we're in, uh, close to being able to go to the community to show designs across Union County for some of the concepts that the consulting engineer has prepared for each of the critical intersections. Ours is Billy Howie and Waxonian Trail Road, and they've prepared two different designs for that. And then we applied, and the last round of funding was CRPTO to do another study. And with Bjorn's email the other day, it seemed to imply that we had been, so we began working at Newtown and Lester Davis on the next one.
And say they come back and, if they say they come back and say Billy Howie and Waxonian Trail needs a roundabout, we would then go into like CRPTO funding? If they said it needed a light, is that something that like we could fund and house? Or does it just depend on?
Possibly, if, I think we're, we're not, one of the, one of the designs is neither of those.
Oh. Can you share or no, you can't share?
I can generally describe it. It would be, we're, we're having a meeting, we're, Emily's going to go to make, I'm going to be out of town next week. One, one would be to, at Billy Howie and Waxonian Trail Road, one of the main issues there is that the primary movements are either heading northwest to go north or heading south to go southeast, right? And so that's the predominant flow of traffic. There's very little traffic continuing down Waxonian Trail Road past the intersection compared to the predominant movement which requires a turn. And so earlier, early in the process, we've looked at roundabout intersection improvements with stoplights, various things. And I posed a question back to the engineers, well, if traffic is going one direction, could we not look at potentially realigning roads so that the road doesn't impede traffic flow? And so basically you'd be going straight down Waxonian Trail Road and continue on Billy Howie. To, to go south on Waxonian Trail Road, you would take a, a shallow right turn at a stoplight.
At a light.
At a light, yeah.
So we would put in, they would take that corner to Billy Howie and ease it.
And curve it around.
Ease it and then that.
And then Waxonian Trail Road, dead end into the Billy Howie Waxonian Trail.
And then Waxonian Trail actually has a roundabout today with Newtown Road. So how did that get justified of all the traffic's taken Billy Howie?
The Newtown Road movement and it kept there from being a, a stop, a four-way stop there wouldn't be efficient enough to move the traffic on Newtown and it didn't justify, the traffic signal would have been too dangerous because intersections are more dangerous than a roundabout and especially in a rural area like that.
Yeah.
But the, so we have one of the design, there's two different designs. One is to improve the intersection to put in a stoplight there. The other one would be to change the flow of traffic.
Now, all this traffic's running down Billy Howie because it wants to go southeast. I'm guessing it's going all the way to Newtown, what happens there? Just a big mess?
That's where it's already going.
Uh huh, I know. But there's not a problem there?
I don't think it made the list based on the data in the critical intersection program during, so we're working.
Interesting.
We basically did the program with every one of the county to identify.
I remember, yeah.
And now we're working through the list of intersections that were identified in that round and probably in a couple of years we'll do another countywide study.
Because it's like we're taking a side road and making it the main road now. Billy Howie was a cut-through road.
Right, and it's, and it's, traffic is, traffic is only going to increase on it over the years. And so the, the main safety issue is at the intersection of Billy Howie and Waxonian Trail now. So that's what the, the study is attempting to address.
Right, I understand that, but I just would expect that a commiserate problem at Newtown and Billy Howie, because I guarantee the majority of that traffic's not, not making it to Newtown.
And Ari backs up pretty good.
Yeah.
When does the committee expect to present the findings from that?
I don't know. We are going to inform the county on our behalf, we've provided the addresses. We're going to inform neighbors in the general vicinity. And so I gave the county everybody, there's not a whole lot of neighbors right there because we have a big farm on one side and some water parcels. So we're, I didn't, you know, we identify people just generally around there and also the HLA for neighborhood, so that they have some notice of it.
In your esteemed opinion, with your expertise, do you think these recommended adjustments would be going through a funding stream? We'd be looking to CRPTO for funds or we would be pulling it out of our bank account to make it happen sooner than later?
We would, I think, probably first try to get somebody else to get back for it. And it would just depend on whether, it would be in competition with other intersection proposals. We would go through the direct allocation funding to see if we can get funded through that, if it meant the threshold amounts. If that didn't work, then we would explore spot safety and other types of funds with NCDOT and I think, you know, as a last resort, if it was a council priority to do something, the road realignment would be outside of your funding capability. If the intersection improvement is done, it's potentially would then look like reasonable, but it would still be pretty expensive.
Okay.
And probably the millions for doing something simple.
Thank you, thank you.
Excuse me, is there, does anyone know if the planned bridge projects on Newtown is still going to start in January?
It's supposed.
They said they could start in Newtown.
To, yeah, it's supposed to start anytime now.
All the way through the fall, right?
So you're going to be detouring. Yep. And I think we posted that on the website or the Facebook page. Yeah, so.
And there'll be a reroute around there and a temporary stoplight as well.
The good news is, is that we are addressing to, we are trying to address to the best of our ability that number one concern of traffic and infrastructure improvements. Any further questions about infrastructure development updates before I go to council comments? All right, who wants to go first?
Mike.
Mike.
Quick question, John, you said something about the technology guy has moved on. We will still have this completed by the end of the fiscal year. That was the only other question I had. And then in relationship to the post office, the last time we really pushed hard for the post office, they told us to come back after 10,000 residents were stronger and we were just shy of that. Other than the next census, which doesn't happen until 2030, is there any way to find out exactly how many residents we have?
There's an annual population estimate, we're still below.
And they've basically given us the middle finger.
We'll have to, I mean, they'll have to. The number of babies that would need to be born or number of houses would need to be built to get to 10,000 is, or not, I don't think in the past.
Well, we were very close, I think, the last time.
We weren't very far, but we don't have, we don't have the housing stock yet.
And we won't with current water and sewer.
It will be years before there's enough housing in the village to get to 10,000, I'm pretty sure, unless a lot of, unless, we import a lot of children.
Let me ask this question, the next time they put out that annual report, would you copy us on it?
Yeah, if, if the state demographer does an annual population estimate, it comes out of fall in the census, they have one each year as well. I can, I'm, I'll send those to you.
I think if we can show growth, we, that are our chances.
But if I recall right, the one from like 2018, 2019, something like that was actually higher than what the 2020 census came out as.
Yeah.
So be careful with that.
Well, I just think we need to show growth if we're going to hopefully get a.
We don't need to import more children because our schools are busting at the seams. And we can't fix that problem.
Well, that was it for the public comments.
Okay, next.
I just wanted to give Kathy a pat on the back for her increasing our interest earnings by 84%. I think that is very, just very meaningful, so I could have seen.
I don't know if everybody's seen it or not, but Union County is conducting the survey, a rural survey. They're doing a vision statement and everything regarding that part of the county that it's yet to be developed. It closes the 31st on their website, so you might consider doing it. There's a question on there to ask you if you, where you live, for your zip code or whatever, so.
Amy, didn't we put that on Facebook? Would you like it on the sunshine list?
I don't care, I was just telling these people. That was the extent of my concern right now.
All right, David?
No CARPO meeting last month, so other than just the discussions that we've had so far on transportation, there's nothing new. Other than that, no comments.
Okay, so that leaves me, last year in February, we did the, so historically council has done a advance, which is really a retreat. But basically the same people came to the advance or the retreat that come on a regular basis. So the past couple, is it twice, two years, we've done a volunteer appreciation dinner. We, that is budgeted, I would like to do that. We have a much smaller number now, so I don't think it would cost, it's not a very high cost, but I think it's still a low cost. But I would also like to propose, and just council, we can think about it and I will add it to the agenda. We just did the survey, so we got a lot of back, of feedback from residents, but one of the community conversations or community events could be cookout with council. And we bring in a food truck and we pay for it and we don't do anything fancy because you know David's cheap, not as cheap as Mike, but they cheap. So we could do like hamburgers and hot dogs or like whatever and just have a food truck, cookout with council and just have council here and staff here if they want to be and just speak to our residents.
I think that's a great idea.
In place of the appreciated dinner?
No, I'd like to do them both. We've got volunteers dropping like flies, so I'd like to buy them dinner. So if you are not on a committee, we would encourage you to join us. They're really nice people. So at the next council meeting, I prepare, I'm going to be prepared to come back to you with some ideas and costs for that if you think that is reasonable. It would obviously need to be like, so maybe an April cookout with council, so it's not too hot, not too cold. So those are just my thoughts, but I will bring it back to you in February, in February just wanted to give you a heads up. And that brings me to the adjournment.
What should you adjourn?
Their second.
Second.
All in favor? Adios amigos.